Well, it's six o'clock. And let's call this meeting to an end. Let's have a prayer. Heavenly Father, how grateful we are for your love and grace. We thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to serve. We thank you, Heavenly Father, for giving us this opportunity. We would ask more of your special blessing beyond us that we might do what's right for the city and for the citizens of Powell. We thank you for your goodness to us in Jesus' name we pray.
I would like to add to this by me electing. Raise your right hand to repeat after me. Uh, I just solemnly swear, I solemnly swear that I make the intention of the office of Mayor of the State of Texas and will to the best of my ability to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America. So help me God.
Do you wish to move on?
Mayor, you are giving. Departmental report, City Administrator?
Just going to touch base with y'all on the sewer line behind the apartments. We've been having a lot of problems with it. And I spent today rough figuring cost estimate on that thing, and I'm figuring about fifty thousand dollars. I've never figured it out this hard. And as quick as I can, I'm gonna get Tim on that thing and get a more accurate price. But I think the line's encased with about thirty inches of concrete and self-plated. And I think we need really look to take some of that money to take out, I mean, take some of council's over the check. And I think we need to look at replacement because it's caused us pretty good trouble. And I just want to touch base with y'all on that.
Now we're moving to old business on the renewal of the health volunteer fire department permit. In your packet, it's thirty-seven hundred dollars. You need the note. I recommend that we renew this note.
Make a motion to renew it.
I second.
Any discussion? All four? We need to renew the Casey and Doc Jones part note. That note is approximately sixty-four thousand dollars. I recommend that we renew this note.
Second.
Any discussion? All four? We consider authorizing PUC to implement the maximum access line rates. Steve, your recommendation on that?
Just the penny, I think we ought to stay where we're at. I talked to the lady in Austin. She told me that they would not go up on their own without us going in. Like I say, it doesn't amount to any gain, practical gain, I can't see right at the penny. So, my personal opinion, I think we ought to leave it where it is. Well, it's locked in now since it was table last time, and I talked to her. We couldn't raise it until September or May. But I think we ought to just leave it like it is.
The maximum rates were low, right?
But this, now, the maximum, I don't know, this is just, this is just strictly French, actually, because all this is. Now, the rates on the phone going up, I don't know. But this is just strictly line rates in town. Remember, we're just talking about a penny, and it was like a hundred fifty bucks a dollar.
Yeah, it'll pass on to the customer.
Yeah, it'll pass on to the consumer. And I just can't see nothing, I can't see going up.
If we take no action tonight, does remain at the current level?
Yeah, I mean, it's, nothing's gonna happen until next September.
Will we get a note of the case?
I've got a note already marked in my calendar, calendar, next September.
Wouldn't you want to tape it, tape it again, or just?
If we take no action on it, then it will stay the same, it will not be rate increases?
Yeah, like I say, right now it's locked in at the old rate of the day.
Is it your pleasure to take no action?
No action.
We need to consider the interlocal agreement with Grayson County for the ambulance service.
I thought we had done that.
It was on the last agenda, we did not have a form.
Oh.
Our recommendation is we do go with this interlocal agreement on a month-to-month basis until Grayson County can or does come up with a recommendation.
Will you make that motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All four? Now we're moving to new business. We need to consider the consent items.
Second.
Any discussion? Four. Next item is to accept the resignation of Councilwoman Carrie Waller. I recommend we accept her resignation.
Second.
All four? We consider the request from Board and by NMOs, they need to purchase the easement located at 943 South Clonington in Bloodside Drive. It is for fifteen hundred dollars, and then we'll take care of closing the survey and costs.
What was the, what is the, we've done this before.
As always.
What is the rate?
Fifteen hundred dollars.
That's what we've done before?
Yes, sir. And all costs to the buyer. I recommend we accept this.
Will I make the motion?
Second.
All four? Now we go into public hearing regarding the submission and application to the Office of Rural and Community Affairs for a Texas Community Development Program, TCDP grant. Any discussion on that? We also have ordinance number 544, an ordinance designating the west side of the intersection of Fonda Rosa and a railroad track located across at 11.3 miles east of the intersection of Fonda Rosa and Denny. Said intersection being in the city limits of the city of Powell and to the northeast of Powell High School. As a stop intersection in the city of Powell, and setting of a penalty for violation of this ordinance. Do we have any public address on that? This ends the public hearing. And ordinance number 544, for the stop intersection, do you have a motion?
No motion.
Stand. Wait a second. Carrie? Any discussion?
This, all this does is, it's not protected, there's not a signal light there, this basically puts the responsibility on the board, this stop.
Yes, yes.
I will, I will tell you all this. Tech stuff right now is trying to work to get the, I believe it's called in program, where they look and study, they actually try to get, three to five years it takes them long, if they're actually trying to get a lot out there. Across.
Okay, the west side is ours, the east side is Grayson County. And Grayson County has been told to put a stop sign on the east side. Any more discussion? All four? We need to consider Resolution 02-004, a resolution authorizing selection of a project engineer and project administrator for cities 2003 and 2004, Texas Community Development Program application to the Office of Rural and Community Affairs for the Community Development Program. Mr. Payne, your recommendations are?
Uh, we've got, we've only received one for administration, and we got one response to find out the possibility. The one we got's from Tim Leaning Associates, and I have worked with them ever since I came here, and I recommend we set Tim Leaning Associates on administration. And we've got two proposals for the engineer. One is from, I'm probably gonna say this wrong, Hector Engineering Affairs and Tim Morris, and on the same token, I've worked with nobody else but Tim, I think Tim does a good job. My recommendation is set Tim Morris as the engineer for the project.
And Mr. Payne, would you like to address the board on this enhancement statement?
Yes, I'm Todd Cave with Tim Leaning Associates, I've seen a lot of you, you can. We're assisting the city with an application for 2003, 2004 grant, as Mayor mentioned. The grant's for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, and it's primarily for water sewer improvements. Cities worked with these in the past. This particular resolution is the selection of an administrator and an engineer for the project should be funded. The reason we do this now, rather than after the project has already been funded, is they give you extra points to go ahead and go through the procurement process in advance. That way, you can expedite the expenditure of funds. So essentially, what you're doing tonight is, you're just selecting an engineer, selecting an administrator, should you be funded, you're not signing a contract with them. If you're, for whatever reason, you're not funded, then this resolution is really meaningless. If you're funded, at that point, you negotiate a contract with the engineer and the administrator.
I make a motion to accept.
Second.
Your recommendation.
Is there any further discussion? All four? Four for me. Any against? Head and talk. Now we consider Resolution 02-005, authorizing intervention in gas utilities, docket 9292, at the Railroad Commission, authorizing participation in a steering committee with other cities served by TXU Lone Star Pipeline, a city's reasonable rate case expenses. And Martha Dormin is here to address us on this.
Mayor, members of the city council, we have a good mayor. She moved up past somebody that wanted to speak. I'm gonna back up a minute and speak about the first thing that I would like to do in regards to Encore. May the third, the Encore employees had an opportunity to replace the wire and poles that went down across Highway 75. And on behalf of the employees and the management, I would like to publicly thank not only the police department, but the fire department for their participation in aiding us in replacing the poles and stringing the wire back across 75. And I know that that did take a long period of time, a lot longer than what we first expected, and we do appreciate all that you do, and it's nice to have team members that will work with you to make a positive for the community, and we appreciate that. Steve and I were talking about docket number 9292, which is the TXU Lone Star Pipeline filing that was done, and it's referred to as the North Side Project. I believe that y'all probably received a letter from Mr. Gay and wanted to take action, some type of action on this, and I told him I'd be glad to come and explain it to you. What this filing is, is we're regulated by the Railroad Commission, and we have to file before them on any type of capital improvement, or any type of rate, or whatever, that we would do where we need to recover the cost of that. And what we are doing is filing to show the cost of constructing and then operating and requesting those funds be made up by the consumer as we construct this. This is the first major capital improvement project that we have had in the last thirty years, and it is that tag, the North Side Pipeline, which, the North Side Project, which I think has probably been a little bit concerning to our cities, and the fact that it does address the north side of our service territory. And the pipeline will be extended for seventy-six point five miles. It is a twenty-four inch pipeline, and it will start in Wreck and Ridge, come across through Denton, through Collin County to Rockwall. Now, everybody is real concerned because they think, well, okay, that's the metroplex, they're gonna benefit from that. Everybody benefits because this is a system that is all tied together, and depending on what the pressure is of that system depends upon how the entire system operates throughout to our customers in the entire service area. So, just because it crosses in Collin County, it also happens to tie in with the line D9, which serves our northern part of the area. So it does directly impact our operation up here, and it is going to be much needed because we currently serve five-hundred-and-fifty cities, and of that, that's one-point-four million customers out there, and we're growing at a rate of about a hundred thousand customers a year. And by looking at those projections, we realize that the current system we have in place will not be able to provide the type of pressure and gas that's needed, starting in the 2004, 2005 heating season. So, this is the process that we're starting now to go through, to build this pipeline, so that it will be ready to go in November of 2004. And that is, we go before the commission to show what it's going to cost, what we're going to construct, and how we are going to then charge the consumer. It will be spread out over a seven-year period of time, and the cost that the consumer will receive will be, the average residential customer, we say, uses about five MCF of gas per month, and that is really high because in the wintertime, that's probably one of the higher ends that you will see. In the summertime, you usually use about maybe one or two of any, and that's about thirty-seven cents for five MCF. A commercial customer, which we say uses average about thirty, would see two dollars and twenty cents. And you ask about, what about the industry? They have contracts where they are subject to curtailment and interruptions, so they are not considered in this because when we realize that the system needs that pressure or whatever, we call them and say, you're curtailed, we're gonna curtail you for X amount of time, or starting at a certain time, or we just say, you have five minutes, we're gonna interrupt you. So, they have a separate type of contract on that. But basically, what it is, is a filing to the Public Utility Commission to show how we propose to build a pipeline, what it's going to cost, and how it's gonna be, how it's gonna be funded, then, by the payback from the consumer. One thing I do want to point out is that, as in previous cases, when we have done this and the cities do intervene, that cost of their attorneys does come back to us, and we do pay that to those attorneys, but then all those rate costs, our cost and the cost of the attorneys that represent the cities, is all added up, and in the cities that intervene, there's a surcharge back to the consumer in that particular city. And that's something that we have seen when we did the gas rate filing, and I was hoping that maybe we'd know what that was going to be before we met tonight, but all of those costs, even though that was done last year, all the bills haven't come in so that they can divide that out amongst the cities that did participate in that hearing. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have. One thing that I didn't point out, that I think's also another plus to us that consume the gas, is that this is coming from Wreck and Ridge. It allows us to have a gas supply, but also allows us to purchase a variety of gas, so that we can shop for the better price for our consumers and keep the cost as low as possible. That's something that currently we're kind of limited on in our system. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Good thoughts, Steve.
Just coming, I know, I know if it gets into events, we could be to run out of gas. I think it's pretty good. Like I say, it's gonna give us more supply.
Is this the same thing that Anderson said enough to, a couple days ago, two or three days ago?
No, that was, excuse me, two weeks ago, they, they decided to join Jeffrey Gate and, and intervene. The one that they did Monday night was a separate filing.
Yeah, that's why I hate the price process. Do we have to take action now?
That's up to y'all. I don't know, I don't know.
You did say, you did say y'all averaged this out on thirty-seven cents per five million cubic feet, right?
Or five, it was yeah.
So it can be lower?
Yeah, well, most people, I don't know, be five, five million cubic feet. That's quite a big.
So you use probably one during the summertime, probably, is what you're paying for, if you have gas or not.
Everything you do goes back to the consumer, I mean, anything anybody does comes back to the consumer, basically. We pay for it, whatever the captain brings, so.
Martha, if we don't act on this, then if it does pass, then we will have to do the rate increases, that we're not intervening?
If, if you do not choose to intervene, you will receive the increase, but you will not receive the surcharge of the cities that intervene. When you intervene, that cost of the attorney and all that comes back to us, and our, our costs that are divided up amongst the cities that intervene, so they not only get the increase, but that surcharge for the intervention.
So why would we want to intervene? So why would we want to intervene? So we get a surcharge?
I make a motion with Pro violation 2-005.
Move to the resolution.
I'm going to enter, enter in with, that's what you want to do.
You're making a motion to accept resolution for the intervention.
Which, which means we're eligible for a surcharge.
Yes. If we don't intervene, and it is passed, then we will not be charged with a surcharge.
Could I ask a question for clarification? Did I understand that this cost is gonna run about thirty-seven cents per month, per residential customer?
For the average, we say the average customer uses five MCF per month. That's taken twelve months and dividing your consumption by twelve, and we're saying five, so it would be thirty-seven cents a month per customer.
Commercial would average, like you said, two dollars.
Two dollars and twenty cents.
Well, it'd be worth that to know that we had adequate pressure.
So Martha, what the question is, is if we don't intervene, we will get the surcharge, we will not have to pay for the surcharge?
That's correct.
And we, the rates will be lower anyways?
Depending on what the decision is made of the railroad.
So if there is.
I withdraw my motion, I.
So if the intervention is successful, then, then what does that do for the city?
If, you receive the benefits of what, what the final settlement is, you receive the benefits. If it was lower, then you receive that benefit, but you don't have the surcharge.
If there's success, if the intervention is successful.
So we would like everyone else butthoused to intervene?
Yeah.
You're right.
Yes.
Thank you all. Do this, does it? I don't want a surcharge. So we take a no action? People say like legal bill, you won't vote using more than the, the gas bill, right?
And I don't know what Mr. Gay's letter said, or what the cost is to the city to, to join them and intervene.
That's what I was supposed to tell, I'm gonna be, you know, I was gone for a week, and then we, I don't remember seeing him with Mr. Gay.
Is it worth a burden of one intervention?
Well, not really burden, I'll be tempted to do it.
Okay, there is a letter here from Jay Doggy, who are Arlington City Attorney, that on April 5th. It's saying that if your city wishes to intervene in the proceeding, please consider the adoption of the intervention resolution. Proposed effective date is June 4th. If your city desires to intervene in this proceeding, which is fit for TXU gas steering thing, please send a copy of it in your office.
Okay, so basically, you want to take no action?
No action.
You're right. Okay. Carrie's no action, and I second.
Thank you, Martha. Okay, the next item is to consider the designation of representative to the Sherman Innocent and the Callington Containing Organization Intermodal, the Urban Transportation Policy Board. I have been contacted, and will be able to serve on this committee, if that is your pleasure.
Make a motion?
All four? Okay, executive session. The city council will convene in closed session pursuant to provisions of the open meaning law, chapter 551, Government Code, Lawrence, Texas. Codes annotated in accordance, in accordance with the authority contained in section 551.074, personnel. To consider the appointment to vacant, to vacant council seat, the unspired term, to consider appoint, reappoint planning zoning commission requisitions. I make a motion to go into executive session.
Thank you.
Second? All four? We will now go into executive session.
Hey, leave that alone.
We're now back in open session. We need to consider the appointment to the vacant council seat for the unspired term. Another recommendation, James Ross.
I make that motion.
A second?
Any discussion? All four? Four for me. Consider the appointment, reappointment to planning zoning commission requisitions. I recommend that we reappoint Philip Tillid and Robbie Seabrooks, and appoint Brian Ross, if that is your pleasure.
I make a motion, second.
All four? There's no action on the next item, the Parks and Recreation Board is unable to meet. The next item is to appoint the Mayor Protam. I recommend Sam Hybris.
I make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All four? Any against? Any extension? Any extension? More extension? Is Mr. Tang willing to serve?
Gonna vote my best.
Need to authorize signature removal for Mary Lee Vaughn, Ray Blutsoe, and Ray Houston from all certificates of deposit with independent banker power.
Subnote.
Sam, that was your second?
Yes.
Any discussion? All four? Need to authorize signatures for checking and money marketing accounts with independent banker power. This will be the new mayor and the new.
Mayor, full council. City administrator.
The mayor, full council, and city administrator. All four? Need to authorize signatures for the certificates of deposit with independent bank power, is that clear? And that will be the same group.
Subnote. Second.
All four? Any more business? I move we adjourn.